All right. Welcome, everybody, to the September 3, 2020 Regular Board Business Meeting. I'm going to call us to order. We have all directors in attendance except for Director Paluso, who's on Legislative Business. A time has been set aside on the agenda for citizens' requests of the board. Due to the coronavirus COVID-19 statewide restrictions and in keeping with the efforts of social distancing to reduce the spread of coronavirus, the meeting of the Gresham Barlow School Board is conducted online rather than in person. So if you are a member of the community and wish to provide public comment, please email your comments to Avery4, A V E R Y four at gresham.k12.org.us. Ahead of the meeting and your comments will be part of the public record. We have a meeting agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Howitt, second by Director O'Connell to approve the meeting agenda as presented. First up, we have the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are matters considered by the board to be routine.
Chair Peterson, you didn't take a vote.
Didn't take a vote.
Got ahead of myself. I'm sorry. Thank you. So back to the motion that is on the table, which is to approve the meeting agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Okay. Back at it. So for the consent agenda, all items listed are matters considered by the board to be routine. They'll be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or persons in the audience request specific items to be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. For the consent agenda, we have item B1, which is minutes from the regular work session July 9. Item B2, minutes from the regular business meeting July 9. B3, minutes from special session for board interviews, July 30, 2020. B4, minutes from the special work session, August 6, 2020. B5, minutes from the regular strategic planning retreat, August 21, 2020. And item B6, personnel report, employee contracts.
I would like to make some amendments to the minutes on B5.
Okay, so you want to pull that for discussion?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to pull. We're going to pull B5 from the consent agenda and add it to. We will add it under J Board Report and Request. We'll just add it as J2 as an item there. If it requires action, we can take it even if it's not listed under the action items, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so our consent agenda, B1, B2, B3, B4, B5 is now removed and B6 is still on the consent agenda.
So I'd move to approve the consent agenda, less item number five, the minutes from the regular strategic planning retreat, August 21, down to J2 as an action and conversation.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Director Howitt, second by Director Sowers to approve the consent agenda, B1 through B4, and B6 with B5 minutes from the regular strategic planning retreat, August 21, 2020, being moved to the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. This time we have recognitions, the National School Public Relations Association awards. And this has Dr. Pereira's name on it.
Yes, thank you, Chair Peterson. It's a great pleasure that I would like to share with some great news too at the board and our community that at the National School Board, I mean, not school board, sorry, School Public Relations Association, INSPIRA Seminar in July, which is, of course, held virtually, the Gresham Barlow School District received several awards in INSPIRA 2020 Publications and Electronic Media Contest. The awards are listed, and I'll share those with you in just a moment. The contest annually recognizes the outstanding education publications from across the country at a national level. This year, there were 631 entries and only 415 of those were recognized nationwide. And so the first Gresham Barlow Award from INSPIRA was, is an award of excellence for the Insider, and that's our employee newsletter. So that's, that's number one for Athena. The second excellence award is for Building Blocks, the School Bond Newsletter. The third excellence, award of excellence is for School Board Website, I'm sorry, School Bond Website. Then, an award of merit for North, for the new North Gresham Elementary School video that we saw during their program last fall. An award of honorable mention for social media, the Class of 2019 Spotlight. And is an example of a series of posts that Athena and her team did. Also, an award of honorable mention for our district website. Since 2013, the school district has earned over 25 national awards with INSPIRA in the publication, the Electronic Media Contest. The administration recommends that the board, President Communication Director Athena, thatness with the INSPIRA Award of Excellence that has been recognized by the national organization.
Right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Athena.
Nice job, Athena.
Jingle fingers.
It's, it's now becoming routine business to celebrate Athena's accomplishments every year, so.
Well, many thanks to Team, many thanks to Team GBSD. We all play a part in strong communications and if you look at what was awarded this year, you'll see that it took the involvement of a lot of staff members, students, parents, community members in order to effectively produce these communications pieces. So I think that we should all celebrate, make the most of some positive things happening. So thank you.
Great work, Athena. Next up, we have an update from the Gresham Barlow Education Foundation. I believe Vicky Mohn is in attendance with us for that update.
Good evening. I was hoping that Tyson Bell, our new president, was going to be able to provide the report, but as typical Zoom meetings, that's not cooperating real well. We are moving forward with our 25th golf tournament. It is not without its challenges, as we all know, but we have switched formats to an AM and PM format. So half the golfers will golf in the morning, starting bright and early at 7:30. And then a second group will tee off at 1:00 PM. We're hoping for a whole flight of 144 golfers. And we're just moving forward and doing the best we can with that golf tournament. It's our largest fundraiser. So we're hoping that it's successful again this year. Wanted to let you know that the school supply warehouse is very busy. There were supplies that were given out for students in elementary schools who, when they received their devices, they received a bag of school supplies as well. And I'm receiving requests from various schools to provide additional school supplies and five different requests for individual backpacks for students who don't have a backpack or, and don't have supplies. So we are able to respond to those needs. And I love that we are able to do that, that we can easily and to join, to give those supplies as they're needed. So that's our report.
Vicky, if I can add a little bit more recognition in the foundation, you forgot to say it wasn't just elementary, it was K through 8 that you helped us with, so.
Thanks, John.
Vicky, what was the date on the golf tournament?
Monday, September 21, at Persimmon Country Club.
Okay, and how many spots are still open for that?
We are, we have almost, we have 90 golfers and we can take 144.
Okay. And they go to the Gresham Barlow Education Foundation website to find that information to register?
Yes, GBEFkids.org, and you can register right there.
Okay. Okay, that's excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Vicky. I think Tyson was promoted momentarily. Possibly. Maybe not anymore. I don't see him under the panelists any longer. So we're going to say hi, but I'm bored. Any questions for, for Vicky? Okay.
Um, Vicky, are you guys doing your meetings virtually, or how are you guys handling your meetings? Because we talked about having one of our board members be a liaison to that, but we weren't sure how you were meeting. Maybe somebody else knows and I don't.
We don't meet in the summer, so we have not held meetings in July and August. So our next board meeting will be September 15. And we are meeting via Zoom.
Okay.
What time was that? I'm sorry. Vicky.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
What time is that meeting on September 15?
We love early mornings, so we are a 7:00 AM meeting.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
I think that's probably why I was never the liaison.
I gotta get used to it, I guess.
Hi, Vicky. I'm Robin.
Hi, Robin.
Hi. Is there any way that you need help supporting your tournament at this time? Is there any special request that we can help with?
Not that I can think of offhand, but if I come up with something, I will certainly email all of you and appreciate the, the request to help. Thank you.
We're not looking for record-setting rain this year, right?
No rain, no lightning, no hail, just a global pandemic.
Yeah.
Always something, Vicky.
Yes.
Oh, we're so appreciative of you, Vicky and the team. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this time, we have superintendent and district leadership team report.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Peterson. It's been quite a week. We have now, all of our faculty and staff have returned. It really kind of feels real for us now, and which is really good. And it's really nice to be able to see people the last few days as we were distributing some devices. But we had our kickoff earlier in the week on Monday and Tuesday with our convocation. We couldn't have the Dick Cap Rally, of course, as we always have in the past. But Athena and her team did a great job of doing some video clips of different key points from convocation and shared those with each of our schools and their principals and department leads scheduled the timeframes for those. We also released a return to learn plan that we shared with you at your work session, but had gone back and edited some things in it. And so we released that to parents in the last week. I said a little bit about the devices earlier, but I just got a number from our tech director that said they've, they've distributed 5,013 devices in the last two days or three days. I don't even know what day it is right now. The three. So then next week, we have four, we have two days for Dexter McCarty and Clear Creek. And then we also have some elementary days as well planned for next week for parents and families. So a total of four more days coming up next week. All right, we anticipate the distribution of about 9,000 devices. And John, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we had over 400 Wi-Fi spots?
We have 300 Wi-Fi spots, which is three, which is 200 more than we had last year. Counselors are doing mostly identifying of families for those who need it, so we're getting it through there, so.
Okay, thank you. And then for the DLT update, the district leadership team, I'm going to share with James first to give you an update on personnel.
Hey, thank you. Actually, I'm going to update you on two different things. The first is our mandatory training. So welcome back to a new school year, and we have mandatory training that we need to get completed by October 15. And last year, we had board members complete confidentiality, sexual harassment. This year, we're going to add cyberbullying because of our current reality as well as COVID-19 and mental health. So I'll be working with Sarah Avery to get that on a, on a, on a work session soon. We welcomed 57 new educators to the Gresham Barlow School District this summer. Last Friday was our new educator orientation, a little bit of demographics of our new hires. We hired 42 female, 14 male, one identifying as X. We hired 35 out of 57 white educators and 22 black indigenous people of color or BIPOC. And in some of the breakdown, we had 11 Latinx, three Asian, one American Indian, two Black, three multiracial, and one Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander. So about 39% of our new licensed educators were BIPOC. And so we welcome all of our new educators to the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Yeah, that does, oh, excited about that. Next, I have Lisa, who will give us some updates on DLI, Distribution of Tech, of course. We've shared that iReady training and Bill's Grant and a few other items. Lisa, from Instruction.
Thank you, Superintendent Pereira and board members. Lots of exciting things around professional learning. We, we come back and we teach each other. So we, but we've got some exciting things to update you as well. Not only do we have the plan to return to school back out, but we also have an updated dashboard about COVID-19. As we're watching from stage three, or one, two, and three, that's available and monitoring our health around this area. We are also looking at all of the assessments, including the new Oregon interim assessments that we'd like to fully use. That kind of answers the question when we're tracking around DLI and how do we really see that we're meeting the needs of our students throughout the year. We also have been doing the devices. That's exciting and it's fun to see people picking things up. And we're working on utilizing our classified staff to train and make sure that everyone is tech-ready for our families and our, our students, most importantly. We're working on negotiations with both certified and classified. And we've been doing a lot of training, Avid Excel for ESL students. We have had the iReady training that Karina talked about. We have been looking at, the superintendent has graciously, well, out of our, our budget, most importantly, going to be sharing the distance learning playbook with all of our teachers, which really kind of guides you both professionally and personally getting ready for this type of teaching and really best practices as we roll that out along with our training. DLI staff has come back with the extra days that we provided them to get ready. And they're excited for that in both two schools now, both at Highlands and North Gresham. And then we have the Perkins Grant that was submitted for the CTE funding, which is exciting because that was funded. So was Measure 98, and we're making sure we put that to good use. And, and then student support services, although you kind of got a UDL update, there is a lot to be done to ensure that we meet the needs of our, identifying our students with special needs and also continuing those plans in a, in a unique situation. And lots of standards prioritization. It's very important for us to, to make sure that we know that we're teaching the most important of our core instructional practices in this unique setting. So lots of exciting work.
Looks good.
Right, thank you, Lisa.
Just a reminder. Mute your mics if you're not on the agenda item. Thanks. Sorry.
The next individual I'll introduce is Jordan, who's our CFO. And I'd like for Jordan to kind of give the board a quick update on the USDA updates that came out earlier in the week. And then they turned around 24 hours later and gave us some new regulations regarding the, we can't really call it PPE anymore, but the protective items. So Jordan, take it away, sir.
Thank you. I'm going to start with bad news and then go to the good news. The bad news isn't, isn't too terrible. FEMA has determined that masks are not an emergency protective measure, but rather an increased operating cost. The justification for that was provided by the deputy director, who said, "Supporting schools and other functions are not a direct emergency protective measure." I think reasonable people can disagree, but the person who makes that decision made that decision. So the, the FEMA funds were a reimbursement anyway. And as far as I last heard, no school district in Oregon had successfully collected a reimbursement. So this really isn't actually much of a change. It's just, you know, FEMA is now being honest about the fact that they don't intend to reimburse for that expense. In order to even apply for reimbursement, you have to meet a certain dollar amount threshold. And as of yet, we have not spent enough on masks to have even applied for the reimbursement. So like I said, not really a lot of change for Gresham Barlow, just kind of formalized that FEMA isn't going to pay for that. In good news, though, from the federal government, there were four waivers that we utilized last spring in order to deliver meals the way that we did. And up until just a couple of days ago, it looked like those waivers were not going to get renewed. They were set to expire at the end of September. All four of them have been renewed until December 31. So those waivers are, that we may serve at no cost in all areas. It essentially functions like a community eligibility program, but for all of our schools, not just our higher poverty schools. So students will not be charged for meals through December 31. The meals may be served outside of the required group settings. So we call that non-congregate service. Normally, we have to serve in a cafeteria, like we do at our schools, of course. That's not easy to do if you're going to deliver the meals by school bus. So to be able to deliver the meals, we needed that waiver. The meal pattern requirements have been waived. Meal pattern means that breakfast is served in a certain window in the morning. Lunch is served in another window, late morning, early afternoon, and then supper for school districts that qualify for that, served in the evening. We, so this is what allows us to hand out the lunch and the next day's breakfast together, which cuts our contact in half. So that's better for student and staff safety if we're not doing breakfast and lunch. It's also obviously a more cost-effective model in terms of running our school buses one time a day. And then parents and guardians, the fourth waiver is that parents and guardians may pick up the meals on behalf of their children. So the children, our students will not have to be, be present to get the meals. So all of that means that we, we used, we utilized all four of those waivers in our, in our service delivery model in the spring. So it will look largely the same this fall as it did in the spring, which we served a ton of meals. And we got good feedback from families in the spring. So I think this will make a lot of our families happy. The one difference that we are working toward, but we, we do not have fully figured out yet is to add in some bus stops on rural roads and highways that don't have sidewalks and have higher speed traffic. So that students, you know, I don't think students would be walking down those roads anyway. So it becomes an accessibility issue. It means that the families who live on those kind of major arteries then can't access the meals. And so by having the school bus stop like they would be, like they would stop to pick up, so brings traffic to a stop. Put out the arm and the stop sign. All of that allows us to deliver a meal in a safe way to students who are in our more rural areas. So we are working on that, hoping to have it in place by September 14. We may not. We will continue working toward it, though. Even if we don't have it ready for the first day of school, we will continue working toward that end. So that's, that's my updates.
Thank you, Jordan, and Chair Peterson. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any, any questions from the board? I have a question of the board. So Mr. Hugh, we owe that by the middle of October. Last year, board, remember, for the mandatory reporting, training, sexual abuse prevention, I believe those were the two that we did in person. And we all sat together in a room until we were done, and we did it as a compliance assurance. We were not in a remote environment at that time, and it was also kind of a drag to all be just sitting there looking at a device. The question I'd pose, having revealed my bias, is whether we are capable adults of doing this on our own time by a deadline. So that would be my inclination. Otherwise, let me know so that we add it to an agenda so that we can sit remotely and watch each other do training. So.
I am happy to send the, the links and the training video to make sure you have access to the courses and happy to send reminders as we get closer to the, the due date as well.
Let's do it that way. Thank you, Mr. Hugh.
Blake, you're muted.
Thought I hit the button. Thanks, Mayor. We're going to go burn through our board recess and get to association report. So first up, we have the Gresham Barlow Education Association and Red Hyman.
Well, hello, everybody. Hope you can hear me. I'm just taking a break. I was picking up, having to pick up my girls from some friend's house. So I had to stop and, and do this, but I was listening on my way. But thank you for your time. Just wanted to report out tonight that we continue to work with James and John and Lisa about creating an MOU for this distance learning. And we're hoping to have that in place soon. Continue to meet, and I believe we meet tomorrow to continue that discussion. I do want to report on behalf of our members that there's a lot of stress and anxiety among all the teachers in this district with, with such uncertainty and just not knowing what the future holds and how we're going to engage and meet the needs of our kids. So I just want you to know that there's a lot of, I've met with members who have been in tears and are just super anxious about, about things and just not, just the unknown about how they're going to reach all their kids. Because as you know, our teachers are passionate about meeting the needs of our students and just helping them grow and become better people and better students. So, but we continue to move forward and we continue to strive to do the best that we can for our students and for our community here in Gresham. And that's what I have.
All right. Thank you, Rep, for joining us. Any questions from the board? Okay. Next up is Tia Ross with OSEA. Hi, Tia.
I think I have a bad connection. I don't know if you can hear me or not, but thank you, Chair Peterson. Awesome. Fellow members of the board and Dr. Pereira, we are very impressed with all the hard work that has gone into planning this year. And we want to thank everyone for sacrificing their summers and getting everything ready for our kids. Also, we are anxiously waiting, finishing up our MOU with the district, and that is all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we have citizens' requests of the board. Ms. Avery, have we received any requests of the board?
It does not look like I received any requests.
Okay. Okay, we're on to action items. First up is the Ruler Contract. Lisa Riggs.
Thank you, Chair Peterson, board members. I would like to start by saying that we presented to you last year our introduction to Ruler, which stands for recognizing emotions, understanding your feelings and emotions, labeling emotions, expressing emotions, and, and, and regulating emotions. But it's from the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. And it really is a systematic approach to social emotional learning and emotional intelligence for not only our students, but for our adults. Last year, we presented with you that we had started a district-wide transition to one specific SEL program, and that was Ruler. And our team had gone through it and had trained and provided professional learning. and provided professional learning for all of our administrators. And then in turn, um, shared that with our adults to help our adults with social emotional reactions and feelings and emotions. This year, we are taking it on full board. As you know, the Oregon Department of Education and Gresham Barlow School District's primary responsibility during COVID is to ensure security, safety, uh, relationships, engagement, and social emotional learning. And this plays into that in our second year planning. So not only because of COVID-19 and the comprehensive distance learning plan, we have social emotional needs for our students, and it has continued to grow during the, the pandemic. This, uh, Ruler provides research-based content covering all the skills and emotional intelligence and the tools needed. And it's obviously research-based and from the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. Um, it, it will help with school climate. It will help with, um, individual social emotional learning for both our adults and our students. And, uh, most importantly, our most vulnerable, those that are experiencing, um, severe issues and trauma as they go through this experience. Um, we will have virtual training at every school for the, um, for the beginning of this year, which then in turn provides them with extensive databases of K through 12, K through 12 content, specifically, uh, created for that grade level. And we will use our, um, our time that we have mapped out in our calendar, uh, for this type of lesson. So, um, just so you know, that, that also comes with Yale-trained, uh, coaches for each building. And we will be using this with our current response, uh, to, uh, response teams. And one of our teams is social emotional learning and, um, mental health. So with that, we, uh, have included the, the contract, um, and also the Hall contract, because Hall had jumped ahead and had done some intense training last year. So their renewal is only $1,000. But the total will be, um, for the entire district, coaching all of the K-12 materials that we'll be using is 91,800 plus an additional 1,000 for, um, Hall Elementary to continue their deep work in this.
Hey, Lisa, uh, you indicated there's a contract, but alls I see is our invoices.
Um, okay, I will look to see. Perhaps it is just an invoice becau-, uh, but we, we can certainly adjust that. We would use our boilerplate template anyway and have that go through Jordan because, um, it is, it's definitely something that we contract with them. However, it's two-part. It's the professional learning and also the access to the, um, online lessons.
Could we bring that forward then to the already heavily populated September 17th? Because I agree with Matt, it's just a listing of an invoice and not a contract.
We do, we do have a signed agreement. If the board's okay with it, I can send it to Sarah, and it can be included in the minutes for the meeting.
Can that agree?
We're asking, I'm sorry, Chair.
No, I was just wondering how quickly can that get? Can we circle back to this action item after the next one? If it's populated into the, into the agenda? Is that possible?
If Jordan sends it to me right now, I can add it right now. And then it might just take a refresh for you on your board docs for it to show up.
Okay, while Jordan looks for it, we don't have, um, a motion. Thank you, Lisa. Any other questions outside of the contract? Okay, let's come back to it. Uh, right now, let's move on to a board, uh, action item, which is nominations for the OSBA Board of Directors, Multnomah Region, positions 17 and 19. So, um, the next nation, all odd-numbered positions except for position one and plus position eight. On the Oregon School Boards Association Board of Directors are up for election this year. Uh, under, um, OSBA, which is the Oregon School Boards Association, I will, um, I will abbreviate it here on. Under SBA's governance structure, member school boards are required to take official action in September to nominate representatives for their region if they choose to do so. For Gresham Barlow, the region is Multnomah County. In Multnomah County, there are currently two OSBA director seats open, positions 17 and 19. Position 17 is currently held by Michelle Voe, who I believe is from Corbett. And position 19 is currently held by Sonia McKenzie, who is from Park Rose School District. Um, this evening, the board will be asked to determine if any Gresham Barlow board members have a desire to serve on the OSBA's Board of Directors or to nominate a candidate for some or all of the positions representing the district's region. Nominations will be closed at 5:00 PM on Friday, October 2nd, 2020. Official ballots will be distributed to member boards no later than October 16th. And member boards will be asked to vote on the candidates following conclusion of all OSBA Fall Regional Meetings and no earlier than November 2nd. Okay, so with that, uh, we currently have, uh, Chris Howitt serving as, a rep on the OSBA Board of Directors.
Right, I'm on position, right, I'm on position 18. And that one, excuse me, that one is not up for reelection this year. Um, I have been in contact with Sonia McKenzie, and her board is anticipating, um, nominating her at their next September meeting. Michelle Voe has expressed an interest in being nominated from, by her board as well. I haven't heard confirmation from that. Um, we are welcome to nominate anyone from any of the other Multnomah County boards. But at least the people that are there, um, have expressed an interest to be nominated, um, by their respective boards.
Okay. So let's start with this. Are, are there any Gresham Barlow School Board Directors who are interested in running for either position 17 or 19? Okay, I'm gonna take that as a no. And I would, I would have added my editorial comment that we have a representative from Gresham Barlow on the OSBA board. It would probably not be likely that a nomination coming from our district would unseat somebody who is from another district within Multnomah County. It's not unprecedented, I'd imagine, but, uh, perhaps unlikely. And we're very pleased with Chris's service on the OSBA board. So with that said, are there nominations from outside of our district?
I nominate Katrina Doughty from Multnomah Education Service District.
Okay, is she aware that you're nominating her?
Uh, she's been talking about it. Um, I think she already announced she was doing it. She's a really good friend of mine, really trust her, so.
Which, which position you do need to designate, which one?
Oh, I apologize.
So Michelle Voe is in 17 and Sonia McKenzie is in 19.
Position 17.
Okay, so it's been moved by Amanda.
We have to second?
Yeah.
Yeah, I second.
Okay. So it's been moved by Amanda Roscoe Beach and seconded by Robin Stowers to nominate. Sorry, Amanda, please. I heard Doughty. What, what was her first name?
Katrina.
Katrina Doughty, uh, from the Multnomah Education, from the MESD Board for position 17 on the Oregon School Boards Association Board of Directors. Is there any discussion?
Just out of curiosity, isn't there a member of, uh, OSBA that is an MESD Board Member currently? Or was that just, uh, my past that I, um, confusing?
There, there are from different regions. There are MESD Board Members currently in Multnomah County. Uh, there may be someone who's on the Legislative Policy Committee, so MESD Board Member. But currently, the three positions from Multnomah County are myself, Sonia, and Michelle Voe. Um, MESD also has an ex officio person, which is the MESD, uh, current chair president there. Uh, organization sits on the OSBA board as well. Does Miss, or does Katrina, is that her name, Amanda? Katrina, does MESD have a, um, uh, do they do summer meetings? Have they met yet, or are they planning to meet, um, to nominate her, or you just want to get it out there sooner?
Um, I just wanted to get it out there sooner. Just put it on the record that, you know, Gresham Barlow, me, I stand for it. So, um, just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, then, all those in favor? Okay, I have Robin, I have Director Stowers, Director Roscoe Beach, and Director Gomez. Okay, any opposed?
I, only because I don't know her. I don't know who she.
I, I would, I would also.
That's my issue as well. So it'd be interesting if the MESD, you know, I'm sure I don't know this, but if they nominate or we get more information on her, that'd be great.
Okay, so, uh, so the boards, so that motion fails. Is there a different motion? And I'm gonna, Sarah, stay close. Because I, I would, I, I will move to declare that the board has no candidates to nominate.
Second.
So moved by me and seconded by Director O'Connell to declare that the board has no candidates to nominate. All those, uh, any discussion? I would only add that it's only because I do not know this person, so, yet.
So why would it be that we have no candidates to nominate when we nominated? And we just turned it then down?
Because it didn't pass, it didn't pass.
Well, it's just an official statement saying that we haven't, you know, not that there wasn't anybody proposed by the board, but just the board hasn't, you know.
Right, and.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, and so playing this out, but if we vote 3-3 again, we will just simply not put forward any stated action. We will not have agreed to any action. And it's gonna go forward without a nomination.
Either way.
Either way. And so, um, but, um, having not really looked that far, uh, I have a motion. It was seconded, so I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of declaring no nominations?
Nice.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
It's a point of, uh,
Yeah, it's a.
A point that we could, okay.
It's a great.
So I don't know that we needed to take, uh, action to not have an action. Um, and, um, so, yeah, I'm not quite sure how that. I don't think we had to vote. It would be just something that didn't happen normally. But once it has a second, you do have to take a vote on it. Um, and, um, and there is more power in having your local district, um, recommend you. It, it just is a better way to start that says, "My board supports me. My board wants me to run." And again, then the other boards get more information about that person. So I would encourage her to, um, to run. Um, and, uh, whenever their next board meeting is, to get that in as soon as they can.
Okay.
Chair Peterson, did you ask for a?
I called for ayes. Are there any opposed? Okay. So I've recorded six ayes. I, um, speak up if I've missed, miscounted.
Carla Paluso is not here. That would be six.
No, we have six.
Right, so you had six?
So I have six, yeah, six votes. Okay. Thank you for your grace as we sorted through that. Okay, so we're back to the Ruler contract. And if you look now, there is a training agreement in the materials. If it's not, you can refresh your browser to find it, and the contract is there.
This, this is just a point of discussion. For future reference, especially when it comes to programming, it would be really useful if we would have had, or if we had a teacher advisory board or a student advisory board so that they can, like, give their perspective on how effective they like these, or how they like these tools, how they are working. And so, um, to make it, to make me feel comfortable, because I think that this program sounds amazing. I think Ruler and, you know, mental health services and having great resources. But that's just something for future reference that I think would make these decisions easier for me to, uh, support more fully.
Okay.
We had a discussion last year on this, didn't we?
We did, about the selection process.
About the, the, um, the process-based, the evidence-based process and whatnot. So I thought we had a pretty good discussion on it last year.
We, we did, um, we did, to, um, Director Stowers' point, we did, we have not evaluated it or understood the district's evaluation of it in the context of teachers and students, yet. It's also a year old so far, I think, our use of it. But, um, but that, 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 I understand the point. Okay. Give another couple of minutes to review, and then entertain a motion unless we are, yeah. If I don't hear a motion, then we will, um, I will ask the district leadership team whether we can push this to September 17th.
Give us a second. It's a 10-page document, so give us a minute to read it.
Chris, you're a fast reader.
One of those pages is a signature page.
And wire and instructions. And Jordan, we have to, we're approving this because it's beyond the threshold. What's that threshold? I can't remember.
Actually, I just texted Lisa to find out. I didn't realize we were asking for approval. The, the threshold is 150,000.
So this is actually under our threshold?
Yeah, so.
It is, but we felt like it was a large enough and a continuation from our conversation last, last year, that we wanted to just assure you because it's, it is a larger purchase.
In anything over 50, I, I usually ask my team to bring it forward for, for information for the board.
Great, thanks. I was just curious.
And Lisa, could you just remind us? Because there's been a whole lot that's happened between now and last year. Did the board receive a presentation on this? And was there a committee of teachers that had at least tried this to see if it worked, to see if it was something that they could use? If you just give us a, you know, a quick overview on that.
Be happy to. So yes, we did present last year when we started talking about how we wanted to streamline through our comprehensive improvement plan, streamline the teaching and learning elements. And one of those is around social emotional learning. We had many different platforms and many different levels of support through PBIS and, um, different systems from elementary, middle, and high. This is a comprehensive, research-based program that aligns with CASL, which is the leading, uh, standards and practices of social emotional learning. And, um, we, we asked a, a team to go and become trained with Yale because they were having a local, um, we didn't have to go to Yale, just so you know. We went locally. And it was something that the other, other, um, ESDs were, were, um, training, uh, around. Then we brought it back and we introduced it with, um, and used it with principals and teachers. Um, and so they've gotten their hands into how to use it with adults. But we had, did not have any expectations to roll it out to our, uh, students. Again, we talked about it, like, being, uh, put your own oxygen mask on before you, um, provide it to your, um, child on an airplane. And so this would be our first, um, indication of how well, um, it will be working in the classroom. We will do a comprehensive, um, uh, evaluation of all of our programs using our logic model, and we'll bring that back. But we. Evaluation of all of our programs using our logic model and we'll bring that back, but we've had rave reviews according to our principals. The response team wants to use it and have been planning around it because we did have access at the district level and now we're just looking forward to releasing that to every single teacher.
If Hall Elementary is ahead of it, does that mean that some of their teachers went farther into the program?
Yes, they had a training team and they utilized it with their adults and they asked for renewal. So. That I guess would be a good indication that Hall really did enjoy it and looks forward to using it in a deeper level.
Did you get a chance to read it, Matt?
Yeah, it's just standard contract.
Okay. Um, I would make a motion to approve the continued purchase of Ruler for 16 Gresham Barlow Schools and the Student Support Services Office. At a cost of $91,800 for use beginning October 12, 2020 through October 11, 2022. Hall Elementary will also receive a one-year subscription to Ruler at the cost of $1,000 beginning October 2020 through September 30, 2021.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Director Howard, seconded by Director O'Connell to approve the continued purchase of Ruler for 16 Gresham Barlow Schools and the Student Support Services Office at a cost of $91,800 for use beginning October 12, 2020. Through October 11, 2022. And, and for Hall Elementary School, which has already received training. To add a one-year subscription to Ruler at a cost of $1,000 beginning October 1, 2020 through September 30, 2021. Any discussion?
I just have a quick question. Since, you know, Robin has a really good point, and so does Chris, regarding. Seeing some results, especially in the size of a contract. And Hall Elementary has been involved in it for a while. Could we get that, you know, a small presentation or an update or something in one of the work sessions? Down the road so we can have an idea of the effectiveness of this program? Would that be possible?
Yes.
Just add it to the list and we'll do it September. How's that?
September 17th, that's what we want to say.
And I have another question, but unfortunately it slipped my mind. Is my mom always just to say it's either a liar or was a lie?
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. All right, this time. Before we do updates from board members, let's visit the item removed from consented into the minutes from the regular strategic planning retreat, August 21, 2020. And because. This request was made by Director Stowers, I will. Open it to her.
Yeah, and I just want to say the minutes look amazing. There's so much information that's on there that. It's so important. And I just had a few things that I wanted to, to update. So after the training, I made some comments that kind of. Summized at least my perspective that I thought were important to include. I'm not sure if you have like standard practices on how you. Want to present your minutes for, for every training or your notes that I should note before I, I give my comment.
Well, typically, typically the minutes record what the subject matter was. And if anybody has presented. What was, what content was presented to the board? The individual board conversation is usually not recorded for minutes except for motions and seconds and board action.
Yes, well, this had to do, I think, with the overall content of the training because I think like as it presents, you know, it's presented less like this. Great equity training. I think it needed to reflect the comments of white fragility. If it could reflect that. I made a comment that the, the training that we did was a demonstration of white fragility and that it's unethical to provide equity trading. Without discussing institutional racism, history, and racial disparities. I think without that, it looks like a. Just a great equity training and I, I just think that that should be noted. So I had three updates. I don't know if, if we can update the minutes to share that or if we have to vote to say, you know, it was said at the meeting. What are we including and what aren't we included and why are we including certain things?
So if I'm understanding, your, your concern is. Yeah.
It's an equity training and from my perspective, that wasn't an equity training.
Yes, and so you, the, the way that the minutes are composed, you feel like sheds a positive light on the training. That you would.
I don't think that, I think the minutes are very accurate. It, it writes about the training as it was. It talked about bias, you know, but it doesn't reflect, I think, that, that. That huge, I think, to me, like important. Point of dissension or observation, you know, from a board member. And I just think that. If, like if it was just all comments, we all said things, you know, during the training that, you know, are not recorded and I don't expect them to be recorded. But I think if we receive an equity training and then someone's like, this is not an equity training, I think that needs to be recorded.
Okay.
Yeah.
I understand.
Not, not that anything before it needs to be changed, but just to reflect that observation or experience.
Okay.
So generally, I think what you said, Blake, is that minutes are. What happened, and Sarah can maybe jump in as well. Minutes are what happened and it, it sounds like. The, the information that, that needs to come forward from, from Robin is that that sounds like that's an agenda item that it needs. It needed more. It wasn't as much as we had hoped, but it, it isn't into a, I like this, I didn't like that. The minutes are supposed to reflect, and so if there was something in the minutes that would just change. What the, the equity was, but. Without having a discussion. With the group about what was included or not. That's not my understanding of what minutes reflect. Minutes is not. Teak of what happened, but it's a recitation of what.
Yes, and I.
So just asking for clarification.
Yeah, but I said this at the meeting and so these are my point of contention. Like when I say something that like is so pointedly directed at. You know, like whatever the topic is, correct, which is a direct commentary at the time of the presentation. Like I think that needs to be recorded. But. I, I don't know. If it's not, it's not, but I just, I thought it should have been.
Yeah, for my, for my edification, and Sarah, I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot at all, but asking in a, in a different context, so. If there was ever like maybe in the bond process or, well, I guess that would have probably been Lynn. How, how do you record dissent outside of a vote or do you typically?
I don't typically record dissent. I try not to record stuff verbatim. Because OD or OSBA has, has, you know, said that it's, like Chris said, it's a recording of what happened, the actions that took place. It's not necessarily this board member said this, this board member said that. So I, yeah, I, aside from a vote, I don't typically note if someone dissents against something unless they're voting on a motion that where they dissented.
All right.
Could I offer a suggestion, Chair, Chair Peterson?
Yes, please do.
So as I'm looking at, this is under the item B, under board training. And it talks about the discussion and then there's a paragraph that gets on to the second page. Just above the procedure and it talks about following the training. There was an opportunity for board members to reflect on what was shared. An item that was shared, and I wouldn't call out Robin because again, it's not supposed to be a recitation, but. A comment was made that additional work in white fragility and, and whatever else you think needed to be in there, but that would be. We had a sentence that says board members reflected on what was shared. And that could be an opportunity to include a statement which then becomes an opportunity down the line. For us to look at the minutes, what happened at the meeting and say. How do we take action on this? But not to put in there a specific, but, but more as a conversation of this is what was shared and. Conversation was, there could have been more, could have been in this topic area. And that helps guide when there's future trainings. What else are we looking for? Does that? And I'm not trying to direct it, but does that help at all, Robin, or is that not getting to what you're wanting to do?
That is all I wanted to be reflected with that, just like that acknowledgement that it, you know, it was shared as you. I mean, and there's other points, you know, where we're called out, but maybe this isn't like a point where we are, like our names, you know, director so-and-so, director so-and-so. You know, it's not uncommon in minutes. And so I didn't think that this was so highly regulated on.
Well, and, and I want to. If I could just walk that back a little bit because under discussion three, we do identify. Vice Chair Gomez noting. Kind of a personal response. So. I, I'm. I'm not super persuaded that we can't include a name or that it's, it's somehow. Subverts the purpose of the minutes. I think if. I, I would say. So we have, we have minutes on the table and it sounds like we've addressed one point or we've had conversation about one point and there may be three point, two more coming. Is that correct? Direct, okay, so. Here's how. You know, you, we have proven consent, which is enacted by one motion. So here, the motion would be to approve the minutes.
They could be minutes as amended.
Yeah, we could have a, a motion for the minutes amended with these adjustments. In which case that could be. Yeah, it's kind of. All or nothing and then we would revisit until the minutes are, are approved by the board.
We can put them into consent agenda for next time and I can have a, a list of edits. I mean, if they're not, they're. All related to items that I have said specifically, so I'll just go through them. So that was one. And the reason why I thought that one should be included was because it was. Like it was an equity training. That's what we were doing. And if somebody has, you know, an opinion that it's not, if we're not training on what we say we're training, I think that needs to be reflected. Also. You know, when we were having a discussion on the equity resolution, I did make a request that we get. A school district data that represents racial disparities. And because it was a request, I wanted that to be reflected. Also with the return to learn plan. I did request again to explore expanding food services to include weekly meal distributions. I mean, I've already had conversations with individuals telling me that, that's not. You know, possible at the moment, but I think that request again, you know, should be noted. And then. Thirdly, when we're doing the athletic update and we were talking about what services were being. Like still being offered. You know, I asked directly about the school resource officers and the ability to redirect that funding as our campuses are closed to. School resources. So those were like requests and so that's why I was concerned that they were reflected in the minute. And then another one, as it was an overall reflection of. The training that we did, I thought that needed. But again, I'm one person. These are my words, so of course I'm going to feel more strongly about it than others. So. Those, those were just the updates I wanted to be reflected in the minute.
So I, I just wanted to ask a question of Chair Peterson. As I'm reading through this, I see the question. That Director Stowers asked about free meals. I see the question Director Stowers asked about SRO money being used in a different way. I see the question about the anti-racism. Deal that, that Myra had. So I'm not quite sure. Again, the minutes reflect. The operations, but it does have those things in here. So I'm not sure what's missing. At this point.
For me, like. Like for a request, I, I think that's something. That. If, if a member, if a board member makes a request. For that to be recorded so that there's some sense of accountability when you go back and you're like, well, I requested. Information, you know, we requested information for, of racial disparities in our school district to be able to complete our resolution. I think that those are points where we can, you know, that we can utilize it to. Hold people accountable and to have some level of consistency as well. I think that they reflect points of action. And, you know, again, like I said, these are my words. They are things that I really intentionally wanted to include in the record. And so I, I'm not sure if there's a, a way moving forward to highlight some. Points of discussion that you want to be specifically reflected. But. I, you know, from my understanding, there's no specific regulation that says they can't be included in the minutes.
Yep. I think we would be in an impasse if we kept on discussing. I think your proposal, Director Stowers, is, is well received that we. Come back at September or we will see this again and just inform me particularly Sarah or, or any other director on the board. If this would be impermissible, but I'd like to see it back on the October. Third, or that, the business meeting in October as part of the consent agenda. Between now and then, Director Stowers can consult with. Ms. Avery. And Mrs. Avery. Before that meeting happens, I'd like you to distribute to the board the present copy of the minutes and the proposed adjustments to the minutes. So that the board can have that conversation at the meeting.
And a, a point of order to Sarah, do then we need to table this since it was an, an item that was on our agenda to move it off this agenda onto. A future one. I don't, I don't remember the mechanics of that.
I don't think we need to table it because there's no active motion on it. So it would be just put on the next agenda.
I, I think you, Chris, to that, if I'm remembering Robert's rules, okay. I think you could move to postpone. But, but as it is, I really, I, I agree, we don't need a motion.
Since we haven't taken any action, there's no motion that's outstanding. There's no. Motion that's been made. So they've just been pulled from the agenda and they'll just be moved to another agenda item.
Okay. Okay.
And for future, like, would it be best, Ms. Avery, if I, if I had any amendments to. The minutes to just write you that in. Like earlier and then like we can just have like, so they're in written format so that we can all review.
I.
The agenda is published earlier in the week, so that would have been a good time to have that discussion.
With the chair and the vice chair.
Yeah, I could have definitely done that. Yeah.
But, but it brings up. We are not short of agenda items. This fits into the overall frame of the operating agreement. For the, for public notice, the board established a new committee at the last, at our strategic planning meeting to oversee that board operating agreement. And the chair of that committee, pointed by me, will be Chris Howard. Also serving on the committee is Myra Gomez and Matt O'Connell. Because. Well, I don't think I need to justify reasons, but. Director Gomez, serving as vice chair and her experience in education. Director O'Connell and Director Howard because of their longevity on the board and having experienced almost everything under the sun and how a board interacts with one another. So. I will. I will work with the superintendent to. To get that on an agenda. And I, I will include a discussion about minutes and their, their function and the process with it. So thank you for bringing that to the attention, Director Stowers.
Thank you.
Okay. Need to get out of the minutes. Okay. This time, we have board reports and requests for updates from board members. I'm going to start with Director Stowers and update, if you have anything to share.
Is this point on the agenda what we are just using to like speak about what we're doing, other school-related activities that we're involved in or...
Yeah, I guess this is your first...
Yeah.
Business meeting.
Yeah.
Yes. And that wasn't, that was just me realizing I probably did a disservice to you to have you start. But yes, typically, if you've been in schools, been at school events, if you've been, served in any committees or any items tangential to education, there's the chance to report on, on anything you're up to to that end.
Well, I attended the I Heart Rockwood event. And yes, that's out of our school district, but they gave away over 500 bags in less than an hour. Like the need that we're, that we have, like in Gresham and our communities is huge. And so I'm so excited that we are handing out all those school supplies and that lots of people are coming and picking them up. And I think we're just doing a great job. So thank you.
Director Howard.
Thank you. The Oregon School Boards Association has approved the legislative policy priorities. And those will be coming to the member boards for adoption. We also, at the, the last meeting that we just had a week or so ago, had a vacancy in the Clackamas region position. And Libra Ford was appointed to that position from North Clackamas. So we welcome Libra Ford onto the OSBA Board of Directors. She comes from the Legislative Policy Committee as well. And so that will leave for Clackamas, filling a legislative policy commission, a position. Let's see. I have, as several of you guys know, I've been on grand jury duty this last month. I have a couple more days left to go on that. It has been very interesting to see another facet of our judicial system and how things work. And in particular, how things are done with community members yet as part of that. One of the things that I'll continue to fight for is that the representation of community members is very limited by your work experience, by your work opportunities, by how you're able to take time off to actually serve. The pool is getting bigger, but it is still not as representative of the community as it could be. So we have a, a meeting with District Attorney Schmidt soon. And that'll be one of the things that I'm bringing up to him, as well as some of that will be going through to legislative type of activity. It has been a very, very interesting time. And I missed actually just talking about school-related things. It's felt like a board committee that has been a very different focus. There's not a lot of happy things that go on in grand jury. That's the one thing that I have found coming to the board meeting. We do deal with difficult issues, but there's always a positive outcome down at the end of the tunnel. And for so many of the people that are presented to the grand jury, there's, there's been trauma just to get there. And so it has been, it's been a difficult month. And I will be glad to be getting off of that and, and moving back into another role. And that is my report for right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Director O'Connell.
Hey, thanks. I don't have a lot to report. Work has been keeping me super, super busy in this same office I've been in since March, kind of tired of it. But hey, I would like to do a shout out to Dr. Preara and her team on the great work they've done over the summer. I know you folks have been working your heiny off, and thank you so much. I know there's probably people out there that are not happy, but you know what? Nobody can, not everybody can be happy. So just great job. Kudos to your team.
Thank you. Director Roscoe Beach.
Hi. Okay. Well, last meeting, I, we as a board and some administrators, we toured Gresham High School that's coming along great. I'm actually really excited that, you know, this is what our major high school looks like. It just looks like a community college. And I'm just really stoked for it to finally be open to students and the public so everyone can see how amazing it is. So I'm already enthusiastic for everybody and their families. Work has also been keeping me very busy. I've been on the phones a lot. And I've actually spoken to quite a bit of teachers in our school district. And so far, you know, they're pretty understanding. They know there's no right or wrong situation, everything that's going on. And generally, pretty positive things. But overall, they're pretty, they're pretty happy to hear that a board member is just like calling around, just phone banking, but not as a board member. But it's just nice hearing what the public has to say. And I even talked to some families. And overall, you know, most people are stressed, but overall, it sounds like the district is doing great. And I'm very proud to report that.
Director Gomez.
I want to second Matt's comment about how impressed I am with the work that, that our leadership team in the district has been doing. Because I know how hard that work is. And I know that we can make everyone happy. So thank you for looking out for our kids. And I want to remind our school board members that we received a copy of White Fragility. So I will be sending out homework soon. I've been working on, you know, chunking up that reading so that we have time to chunk and chew, as Karina would say. So I'll be sending that out shortly and so that at our next work session, we can have our first book discussion. And, and again, I'm open to conversations, emails, texts, so that we can have, so that we can have those courageous conversations because we are all in different parts of that, of our journey, of our equity journey. So if I can help anybody with that, with that journey, I'm happy to. And lastly, so at the tour, when we went to the tour of Gresham, like that was what, our second tour? And the first time that we went, I think I made a comment to somebody about how I thought our walls were very bare. I mean, we didn't have anything up on our walls. This time I noticed it was that beautiful collage of the wings, Riley said, that one where we took pictures. So I read, I looked at Sandy Hook because Sandy Hook was torn down and rebuilt. And the art, when the architects built that school or designed that school, they were doing it with safety in mind, which I know we did with our schools, but also in creating that feeling of joy and belonging for the kids. And color plays a big part in that. So I just want to encourage our school leaders to like encourage the kids when we do come back to add some art, like have murals or something so that they don't, so that we don't have their, their walls when we go through these tours and add some joy to the schools because they look amazing, but they would look even better with kids' expressions on the walls. So that's it.
Okay. My report is, we now officially have a middle schooler. So we had our device distribution a couple of days ago. Kids are very excited about that. I want to applaud the district for the logistic planning that goes into that, not just the devices themselves, but the, the hotspots. I, the, the inequity inherent in our current educational structure is not lost on anybody in this conversation. It's, it's a frequent source of conversation. It was at our strategic planning meeting, and it will be going forward. And I just, I just, you know, as a rabbit trail off of Matt's and Myra's comments, the logistics that you have pulled together as educators is really, really remarkable. And, and thank you for serving families who, who are buckling up right now for the next, for the next few weeks. It's pretty daunting. In a way, we had an extended summer break and in a way, we didn't have a summer break at all. So I, just no teachers. I expressed it last year. We are full of grace as you navigate this. We're just grateful to have somebody in our kids' lives as a voice in their life that's not ours, that they tend to listen to a lot, a lot more. So anyway, that's what's happening in the Peterson household. I was super impressed with Gresham High School. Jordan, thank you for leading that bond to its conclusion and doing it well, stewarding every penny and to meet the expectations of taxpayers who are, who are still paying the bills even when they maybe don't have the, the income to do it. So we're gonna, we're gonna make those schools shine for our kids. Looking forward to seeing Barlow here in a couple of weeks as well. So with that, that's my report. And we, we can move on to closing items. For announcements, we have our next board work session is September 17th. We are going to hold that work session at Barlow High School in person, observing appropriate social distancing guidelines. Board, we will be meeting at 5:30 for a tour. And most likely, we will not be getting into our agenda and opening the formal work session until 6:30 PM. Again, that's at Barlow High School. October 1st, we'll have a board work session, followed by a regular board meeting. At this time, that is intended to be held virtually, just like tonight. So with that, there being no other business before the board, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.